Good evening and welcome to the City Council Special Session Meeting of August 3, 2021. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Studley?
Here.
Councilmember Schuler?
Here.
Councilmember Lynn?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Tortorello?
Here.
Councilmember Foreman?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Studley, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
And Mayor Clark?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'd like to start with our city attorney, Ms. Walker.
Thank you. Can we?
Bob, can you advance the slides?
Advance the slides, somebody. I'm just doing one slide, so you don't have to be Vanna White very long.
Back one more.
Go back one.
Back one.
There we go. Okay, so I'm just going to give you all a little bit of background and then Chairman Bob Thompson is going to present the rest. But the Charter Review Commission was appointed in the summer of 2019. And they were given a list of very specific items to look at in the charter to determine whether or not amendments needed to be proposed to the voters. That resolution was amended twice and the list added to, so you'll see that in the report that they did quite a bit of work. It's taken a couple of years to get to this point. They had monthly meetings open to the public, publish the agendas, all that kind of stuff like we would for any other meeting. COVID, of course, had an impact on the monthly schedule at times, but we met a lot. We had quarterly public hearings and then reports to council. And the way the agenda is structured tonight is based on the resolution that appointed the commission. Counsel is required to vote whether to send each recommendation to a vote of the people. If you want additional discussion or tweaks to the proposed language, we would schedule that for future discussion. Tonight's just an up or down vote on whether to send the language as proposed to the voters. And then finally, election dates and ballot language will come back to you all for future discussion and vote. This is just the amended language in the charter. It's not the actual ballot language. So with that, I turn it over to Chairman Thompson to present what the Charter Commission recommended.
Thank you, Catherine. First of all, on behalf of the Charter Review Commission, I'd like to express our appreciation to you all for appointing us to be part of such an important part of our governing process. The charter being sort of our guiding document for the governance of the city. We had, in my opinion, an excellent group of people that represent a wide range of experiences and viewpoints. And we did our best to remember that the items in front of us for discussion were intended for us to help you reach a conclusion about what our community as a whole thinks of the questions that were put in front of us. So we took all of these questions very seriously. And some of them we set aside without recommendation. But in all cases, we tried to recognize that our conversation, our exchange of ideas was the most important part of our process. So we avoided, to the extent that we possibly could, having kinds of debates that were simply a contest of winning or losing. I'd like to spend a little bit of time on the recommended changes or the no recommendation for changes because some of them we recommended no change because we didn't think it was an appropriate item for the charter. Some of those, I think that the telephone issue was probably the best example of that. The idea of providing telephones for the city council was a good idea, as you've demonstrated. But you also demonstrated that it didn't need to be an item in the charter. And the problem with putting items like that in the charter are they become very difficult to change as technology changes, as, just as time takes over. So we try not to impose things on the charter that are items that are going to need to be amended or revisited on a regular basis. So some of those, some of the items that we recommended no change, we recommended for that reason. There were several items that we recommended no change on that we simply felt needed to be clarified. The questions themselves needed to be clarified typically by the council person who had submitted the question to us. And so you might see that there was one where we were considering adding language to the charter that would establish consequences should the provisions of Section 2103 of the City Code be violated. And in lay terms, that's our ethics. Well, we didn't recommend any changes to that. But we want to be clear that we all take ethics seriously. And we would have been happy to actually have a good conversation about what is an appropriate set of bright lines for ethical standards for the council. But we would have looked to the council or the council member who submitted this question to us to give us a narrower set of parameters than just the violation of ethics. We could have talked about that for many, many meetings and not come to any firm conclusions. So I don't want our commission to have been, to be construed as having been indifferent about the need for bright ethical lines or the seriousness of ethical conduct on council. We simply didn't have the clarity in the question itself that we felt we needed in order to have a good exchange of ideas that would lead us to a real definitive conclusion. So regarding the, regarding the items that are in front of you that we did not recommend for change, I just want to be clear with you that our failure or our unwillingness to recommend them for change does not, should not be construed as we flat out disagreed with the premise of the question. So that if any of these in the future strike you as being something that you'd like to recommend to another commission for review of the charter, certainly be appropriate. Keep those in your notes and revisit them at your, you know, at your will. Now we'll get to our recommendations. Our first recommendation has to do with the appointment and removal of the city attorney by city council. And that's a, that's a legal description of what we would typically refer to as having the city attorney be an employee of the council itself. We had a very good discussion on that. And our recommendation was that, yes, we thought that that was a good idea, that the city council finds itself in need of independent representation by an attorney. And that it would be beneficial to the city council for us to provide that. And so we recommend that language to go forward on the ballot. Let me see, I'm sorry, I'm a little... Now, regarding these, I'm assuming that you guys have all of the legal language in front of you, so I'm not going to read the legal language for you unless, well, I'm not going to read the legal language for, put everybody to sleep. Our next topic of conversation was a stipend or increase for city council members. And this is, this is a sticky little question, especially for politicians. And so this was a really important thing for those of us who have been on council and those of us who were interested in city government. It was a really important thing for us to consider on your behalf. I think that when our debate started, there was a general sense that, well, it's a, it's basically a volunteer position and that the current, the current really minimal stipend would be sufficient. And at this point, I'm proud to say that we had some, some interjection by the public itself in our meeting. One of the members of the public who had come to the meetings and watched us debate this asked for the opportunity to interject his opinion, his input. And he pointed out that if we wanted to have an inclusive city, which I think that we do, that we wanted to make sure that our city council was available to people of all of our economic stratifications. And he made the excellent point that city council tends to be, and in fact, our commission was heavily weighted this way, to be people who were either salaried or had a job that allowed them the flexibility to take time off to do this sort of a thing. But that didn't really, and then it would be easy for somebody in that position to say, well, this is a volunteer position. But, but if somebody who works for wages, hourly wages, was to want to run for council, it could be difficult for them to take the time off to do the quality of job that we expect our city council to do. His, I'm glad to say that his idea carried the day. And because of that, we have these recommendations for salary ranges or stipend ranges that we develop in front of you. These are based basically on our guess at what the amount of time that's required for a city council person to spend. If you calculate it at roughly the minimum wage, you're going to have this range of pay. We try to, we try to also state this in a way that overcomes the current problem that we have, which is that the actual amount of money that's paid to a city council person is in the charter itself. And so that's the way it stays because politically, nobody wants to give themselves a raise. And so these recommendations are, I think, a very good cure for those problems. They will allow us to, to make sure that the offices are open to all of the community and not assume that only people who have free time make good council people. The next one is mayor and council members' term. Obviously, you're all aware of what the current situation is. And we presented with a little bit of a problem in that running for council, where you're elected every two years, you're almost always, you're either learning or you're in the process of being challenged. And it takes a while to find your feet, it takes a while to become effective and efficient at what you do. And by the time that you've been there for your first term of just two years, you're barely really up to speed. And we felt like that's a serious disadvantage for the community. Tends to produce a high turnover of our, of our representatives and challenges our sense of continuity. But our current process works pretty well because, because of its interplay with the mayor's race every third year. And, and so at first, we decided, you know, we, we thought we just wouldn't mess with it. But then we had, I think, an excellent, an excellent suggestion by one of our members, Mayor Trey Bates, suggesting that we see what it would look like to have everybody run terms of three years. And in doing so, have every mayor's election be simply an election for the mayor. And each council election be an election for the, for the odds, for the evens, and then one for the mayor. All of these terms being three years. And the advantage to that, I think that the committee really appreciated was that it gives us a chance to have a citywide election for a citywide seat in our mayor. That is, a standalone election that becomes the singular focus of that election. So based on that advantage, that's what we recommended. And the staff, I promise you, the staff did a lot of work on this. I mean, when you talk about changing the process of elections, it's a mathematical question. And the amount of time and effort that went into figuring out just how we would transition from where we are to where we want to be was, I can't imagine that it was an easy thing. Catherine is to be given a huge pat on the back for that. I gotta see if I can follow my, my conversation here. So there is an awful lot to this particular part. There's an awful lot of language that, that has to be changed in order to affect that. And so you'll have several pages regarding this. And I don't think that that was the, you correct me if I'm wrong, Catherine, but we didn't, that wasn't the item where we talked about the beginning of each term change, was it?
That was, yeah. And so I was going to jump in and say that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so one of the other changes in that item four and five is, and it's the same language, so that's why they're combined on the slide, same sections of the charter, rather. The terms would begin on the first Tuesday following certification of the election results. So it would no longer be this big lag between an election, you know, in February and taking office in July.
Yeah, and I wanted to bring that to your attention because that's a charter change that we made some years ago in response to a concern that new council members were having to vote on a budget virtually as soon as they were elected. And so we tried to produce a situation where the new council members had a gap between the time that they were elected and the time that they were actually being required to vote on a budget. That was all well-intentioned and it's a really excellent example of how cautious we should be about making changes to the charter because you find out about unintended consequences when they become consequences. And so that has, that gap, while it gives council members an opportunity to get up to speed on a budget, it really also produces an awful lot of confusion. It produces confusion in the public who believe that they've elected you to office and you're an elected official and they should start talking to you about what they, what they want, what they need. And all you can tell them is, I haven't been sworn in yet, I'm not actually an elected official. It can be an awkward situation where you really need to be able to work as a new council member with somebody who you may have just defeated. And they may not be in any sort of a mood to help you. And, and we've had all of those things happen. And so as, as a commission, we, we recognize the need to sort of retract that and try to keep things simple and straightforward for the execution of the office and for the understanding of the community. And then there, you know, what you have to live with if you choose to, if you choose to change it, what we have to live with is that new council members will have to vote on a budget that they've had very little input on. And it's just, just one of the imperfections of life. Filling vacant positions. We've had some, recently, we've had some questions about the methodology for filling vacant positions. And I think that we found that our current charter language is fairly vague about that. So we tried to give it some clarity, saying that the vacancies occurring should be filled by a majority vote of the remaining members of the city council. And, and then again, if the city council does not fill a vacancy by appointment within 60 days after the same occurs, it shall be mandatory on the part of the city council to call and schedule a special election for, to fill that vacancy. I may have this out of order. The other recommendation was that we would simply... The other recommendation was that we would simply codify the, or clarify the language to match our historic practice that an appointment is an appointment to fill the remainder of the vacancy. And I, I think that that comes up as, as a question because of recent problems we had with filling an even-numbered ward when it overlapped into an odd-numbered election. And the question was, well, was that appointment for the duration of the odd term? Or do we put that appointment on the next available election? And so we just tried to clarify that it would be, that the appointment would be for the duration of that term. The utility rate question is, that's, that question comes around almost every time we review the, the charter. And quite often, the rationale for it is that we would function more efficiently, that we would function better, that it would be easier if utility rates were a function of the city council voting versus having the public vote. We had a great presentation by the staff regarding the needs of utilities and the functions of our utilities. And what we, what we found was that in the 50 or so years that we've done this, we actually have, of course, we have a very well-functioning set of utilities. Our utility rates tend to be on the low side for the rest of the surrounding communities. And that, that didn't indicate that we needed to change that particular practice. What we did think that we might need to change is to encourage the city council itself to have the political will to regularly introduce ballots or votes on utility changes, on price changes. So we came to the conclusion that, that if there were any problem at all in our approach to utilities is that the city council tends not to bring utility votes forward because it's politically unpopular. So we recommended language that would require annually to have a review of at least one of the utilities and bring it forward on an annual basis. That would put the onus on the city council to decide where the need is and introduce it to the community. Item eight, we had a question on the part of the Norman Regional Hospital Authority. They would like to increase the number of board members from nine to 11, which is, wasn't particularly a difficult question. But the difficulty that we ran into with their request was that the two more appointees would be from other cities. And so we debated some, at some length about the appropriateness of having members from other cities on the board of a municipally-owned hospital. I think that the, the rationale of the regional hospital was that they're serving other communities and they want the other communities to have some serious, some meaningful connection as well. And after some good debate, we decided that that was a good rationale and that we could allow that with a stipulation that that never be more than two people appointed to the board from cities that are not Norman. Regarding the recall of elected officials, obviously, that has some, some recently current meaning to it. And we had found out during, during our process, actually, we had found out that we, that our charter needed some language changes in order to come into compliance or to be congruent with state law. So most of the changes that we've recommended are in that vein. That whatever deficiencies we're, we have in the charter language right now need to be brought into compliance with state law. We'd also found ourselves in a situation that probably nobody anticipated in which more than a majority of the council stood to be, potentially stood to be recalled. So we tried to address a situation in which that would occur. Should five people be withdrawn, then we wouldn't have a quorum to actually function and do city business. And so you'll find language in here that addresses that, that specifies that a majority of the remaining council will be allowed to make decisions. We wouldn't want council to be in a position where they couldn't even meet to schedule new elections. So that was, that's a very important item there. And then we also tried to recognize that the, the value of a recall, the validity of a recall would begin six months from the date that you, that a person was sworn into office. But that we also wouldn't recall them within six months of their, of the end of their term. That the, the entire process of the recall is, we've found, you know, for ourselves, the entire process is quite involved. It takes time. And, and we found ourselves in a position, unfortunately, where people were actually still in the process of being recalled when they would have also been in the process of becoming reelected. Then the question is if they got recalled, but then they're reelected, are they elected or are they recalled? So in order to address that little bit of comedy, we just try to limit a recall to six months, basically, six-month bookends where they're relevant and beyond that not. I think we also addressed the fact that we'd had, we'd had another recall where the recall was invalid because of, because of the GIST. No, it wasn't a recall, it was a referendum. But, so we recommended the use, to use the form provided by, by the state for referendum petitions, provide a simple statement for a GIST. And basically, give the clerk enough time to actually validate the, the state, or the signatures that we're requiring for validation. Obviously, validation of the signatures turned out to be a very, very critical thing. It should be a critical thing for, for any of these processes. So since the validation falls to the clerk, it might be simple for the clerk to do a 30-day validation if one person is being recalled. But when multiple people are being recalled, that same 30 days becomes untenable. So we've got language that has a little bit of a provision for the multiplicity of things. We also added a publication requirement in advance of any recall election. And that too is in accordance with state law. I'm not going to go through all of those changes. Our next question has to do with ward residency. And the question being, in order to be eligible to run for an office, how long do you have to live in a ward? Can you move into a ward and declare your candidacy? How long do you have to be in a ward to be eligible? And what we're recommending is that a person must reside in a ward for six months prior to their election date. If their ward designation were to change for reasons of reapportionment, where the reapportionment committee gets together and rearranges your ward and suddenly you, you used to live in Ward One and now you're in Ward Six, does that make you ineligible now to run for city council for six months? And our answer, of course, is no, that we would have a, a stipulation that would allow, if it were for that sort of reason, you're, you'd, you'd still retain your eligibility to run for office. Our final item is regarding tax increment finance districts. And this particular item, I'm, I'm very proud of the way that we've handled this item. Excuse me. TIPS are a big thing in Norman. They've been a big political thing for us. We spent quite a bit of time and good conversation on this. But we happened to meet in January when, when this issue came up. And in January, we had people who were still on vacation. We had people that didn't want to get out in the cold weather. This was in January of 2020, I believe. So we only had 10 people in attendance. And I gotta tell you, our commission actually typically had 14 or 15 people in attendance. I'm, I'm really impressed with the commitment that our commissioners had to showing up at every meeting. This meeting happened to be a little less fully attended and it happened to be attended by an even number of people. The question before us was whether TIPS should be required as a voting, a vote of the people if they were over $5 million in value. And after some, some good conversation, we all agreed that the $5 million stipulation seemed both arbitrary and a possible source of mischief. But if somebody wanted to skirt the public vote, they could just do their TIP in phases, keeping each of them under $5 million and so forth, you know, and really skirt the intent of, of the charter at that point. So, so we dropped that out of our language. And the language that we came up with, that we agreed was the question, is important in this case because, because we came to a tie. And when I first reported this to you, I was unsuccessful in my characterization of this in the paper. Thought that I was telling you that we had not recommended any change. The fact of the matter is, we recommend that you look at our debate, you look at our conversation. And as is the case anyway, you guys decide on all of these things in the first place. We did not want to take this particular item back to a revote of our committee because we felt like that would politicize our committee. I'm gonna go out and try to get as many of my members as possible to be in attendance next time. And if you don't do the same, then you're gonna lose and I'm gonna win. And all of that for a recommendation that still is up to you. We didn't feel like that was an appropriate way for us to conduct our business. The people who were in attendance in January should have their opinions honored, their votes honored. And so instead of presenting this to you as a win or lose, or an up or down, yes or no, we presented this to you as, as our understanding of what would be a good question to be on the ballot. So the question, the language that we had in front of us was that a retail, a retail-based TIP, since it's a long-range mechanism and since it's a mechanism that is actually a, a potential challenge to the treasury, that that would be an appropriate thing for the public to vote on. But that a TIP that was a, an ad valorem TIP, that only used property, property taxes as a mechanism for financing, that that would be more appropriate for the city council to make a decision on just by a simple majority of the city, city council. And that that would, that should be uncontroversial to the rest of the city because it's not going to threaten to undermine the tax base later on if it doesn't perform as, you know, as advertised. Now, the committee came up with that, or actually, the staff came up with that kind of language and the committee voted on it and it was a split vote. So half the committee disagreed that there should be any restrictions on, on the city council in terms of passage of a TIP, that all of the TIPS would be at your discretion only. And then half of the commission thought that it was a good idea to handle one TIP one way and one TIP the other. So we wanted to be sure that you knew that, that we all thought that the ideas were valid ideas. None of us were interested in shouting down the opposing set of ideas. And, and if you have the opportunity to read the minutes, I think you'll appreciate that we had a very good debate, a very good debate from all of our political quarters. So I'm proud of our commission for that. I'm proud of the commission in terms of their representation of a very wide range of, of opinions in the city of Norman. And again, we'd like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to be involved in all of this. If you decide that tonight's not the night for you to vote on these things or any of these things and you want to have further study sessions on them, I have no doubt that, that our commission, that any of the members of the commission that you would like to invite, and I certainly would be happy to attend any study sessions that you have in order to help you understand what we were thinking, what our conversations were like, what we weren't thinking, and be as much of a resource to you as possible. We, we think that that's the most important part of our commission, is that we're a recommending body. So these are recommendations that we recognize, are recommendations for decisions that you have to make. We are certainly not here to try to influence your decisions one way or the other.
Chairman Thompson, thank you so much for your work, counsel, and the packets that we got, the final report. If you noticed the many, many times that they met to present this to us, thank you very much and to all of the rest of the thank you very much and to all of the rest of the commission members. Are there any Charter Commission members here tonight that wish to add anything?
He did a wonderful presentation.
Okay. Counsel members, I just want to remind everyone that counsel will be voting on each recommendation separately. Counsel will have the opportunity to ask questions prior to the vote, and we will receive public comment on them as well. All counsel is voting on tonight is whether or not to send these recommendations to the voters for approval or disapproval. A yes vote indicates that your support to send the questions to the voters, and a no vote means you don't want to send the question to the voters. If counsel wants to amend the recommendations prior to moving forward, the recommendation tonight needs to be voted down as written, and staff will bring those items, if any, back to counsel in a study session for additional input prior to calling the election. Everyone understand? All right. Let's start with the review of Article 7, Section 2, to consider whether the city attorney should be appointed and subject to removal by the City Council. The recommendation to send it forward passed by a vote of 8 to 3 at the CRC Council or Charter Review Commission meeting. I need a motion to approve or reject the recommendation. Thank you. Are there any questions from counsel regarding this recommendation? Seeing none, this is an opportunity for the members of the public to make comments regarding this recommendation. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers registered for this item?
Yes, we have one speaker, Cynthia Rogers.
Thank you. Pass? All right. Are there any final questions from counsel regarding this item? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve the recommendation. Counsel members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve passes by a vote of 7 to 2, voting against Councilmember Kelly and Councilmember Tortorello.
Thank you. Article 2, Section 1, to consider increasing the monthly stipend provided for the mayor and council members. Language recommended would provide an initial increase in annual stipend and provide for a compensation commission that would determine additional increases every three years. The CRC vote was unanimous. I need a motion to approve or reject the recommendation.
Still moved.
Are there any questions from counsel regarding this recommendation? Seeing none, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this recommendation. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
No, I'm sorry, we do. Daniel Munson.
Munson with Ward 6. So I gave this some thought, and this is not about the money at all for me. I think that if you're getting paid the current amount or this proposed amount, that you're probably still going to be underpaid. I understand you guys do a lot of work, put in a lot of hours. One thing, a common theme that I've heard from the public is that they don't feel heard from City Council. And a common theme that I've heard from City Council, this one and previous councils, is I'm inundated. I am completely inundated with emails, phone calls, text messages. And what I think a different proposal could be is that you have two councilpeople per ward. So one councilperson being the primary person, one person being the secondary. So only one person would sit behind the dais. One person would be, the primary person would be paid a higher stipend than the secondary person. If, let's say you're out of town, then your alternative, your alternate would sit in for you. That secondary councilperson could also help you with emails, could help you coordinate and collaborate with the city, could help you respond to telephone calls. So I view that as kind of a win-win. Another benefit of having a primary and an alternative councilperson would be, let's say a councilperson moved to another ward. Well, that alternative councilperson moves up. So that takes care of the issue for appointing a new councilperson. And I would view this, I would view the councilpeople to run as a team, like president and vice president. So when you vote for the councilmembers, you're voting for a team of people. So therefore, you're both elected. So those are my ideas, so I wanted to bring those forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any final questions from counsel regarding this recommendation? I have one. In the actual language, it says it's got a range, and it would need to be decided before it goes forward. How would we decide that? Okay, so we'd have just additional presentation and talk about it in a study session?
Actually, when the ballot language is written, when the city attorney prepares the ballot language, direction could be given then about what you wanted the amount to be.
Okay, because you had said minimum wage based on an estimation of hours. So it just seemed like a big range. I was wondering where you got that, but the minimum wage? Okay. The motion on the floor is to approve the, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Holman.
So on that, on this part, it says a commission will make a recommendation, reviewed and determined every three years by a five-member board. But then at the bottom, it says we need to identify the exact number in the charter, which kind of got us to this point, is that the $100 or not more than $100 is identified in the charter, and no council's ever won. And so are we just locking ourselves into another number?
It's the initial amount that's set in the charter, and then future increases would be set by the compensation commission.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that was clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselmember Hall?
My question is similar to that. My understanding was that this five-year compensation commission would be setting the amount, but not at the beginning? Is that what I just heard? Okay.
The beginning amount is in the language itself, within that range. And then any future increases would be set by the compensation commission.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other questions, the motion on the floor is to approve the recommendation. Counsel members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion passes by a vote of 8 to 1, voting against Councilmember Lynn.
Thank you. Item 4, review of Article 2, Sections 2, 5, 6, and 14, to consider whether the term of office for councilmembers should be changed from 2 to 3 years, and whether the term for mayor be changed from 3 to 4 years. I thought that was taken out. The mayor, 3 to 4. I thought there was no recommendation for the mayor. Got it. Language recommended to provide for three-year terms for all ward representatives. No changes to the term of office for the mayor recommended by the CRC. The CRC vote was unanimous. I need a motion to approve or reject the recommendation. Thank you. Are there any questions from counsel regarding this recommendation? Seeing none, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers registered?
Yes, Daniel Munson.
Dan Munson, Ward 6. So I like the expansion of the term. I don't have an issue with that. I do have an issue with something that happens at city government, county government, state government, and federal government. And this is, sometimes people are elected, and they don't pay their taxes. And so I don't think we have any language within the City Council Charter that said if you didn't pay your property taxes, or if you were a business owner and you weren't paying your city sales tax, that there would be any penalty for that. And so I don't think it's right for a councilperson to not pay their taxes and then come in here and then vote how to spend our taxes. So I'd like to see that added. And I mean, it would drive me nuts if someone was delinquent in their taxes and then they were, you know, voting to always spend my taxes or the city's taxes. That would drive me nuts. So that's something that I'd like to be added in. So thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and add an item. Can we still do that at the end for comments like that? Nope? All right. Okay, gotcha. All right, we're going to roll with that. Are there any final questions from counsel regarding this recommendation? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve the recommendation. Counsel members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion passes by a vote of 8 to 1, voting against Councilmember Lynn.
Thank you. Item 5, review of Article 2, Section 2, to consider whether the term of office for councilmembers and mayors should expire on the last Tuesday of the month in which a runoff election is held or scheduled to be held. Language recommended to change the beginning and end date of terms such that a new term ends on the first Tuesday following certification of the election results for the new term. The CRC vote was unanimous. I need a motion to approve or reject the recommendation. Thank you. Are there any questions from counsel regarding this? Seeing none, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comment regarding this item. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers registered for this item?
Yes, Cynthia Rogers.
Good evening, Cynthia Rogers, Ward 4. I actually had a question about this in the language. So if there's just two people running, and that happens in February, does that mean then they get appointed in February? And is it appropriate to cut off people's terms if it's just all fresh candidates? Obviously, it's not a problem if an incumbent gets reelected. So I have a question if the language is clear enough about that. And if it's not, I don't know what the Charter Review Commission's discussion was in that situation, but we've had that happen. We've also had people win outright when there were more than two people running, and they win in the primary, so there's no runoff. And so what does that mean? Was a runoff scheduled? Was a runoff not? Did they take over in February? So I think that should be clear. And if it's not clear, I think I would have some reservations about them taking over in February when somebody who was duly elected would have their term cut so short. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any final questions from counsel regarding this recommendation? Can we go ahead and get, okay, clarification on that?
Yeah. The commission did have that discussion about that scenario. And this language, the way it is written, is intended to allow an elected official, regardless of whether they're elected at their primary election in February or the runoff in April, to take office the following Tuesday, following certification of those results.
So that would be possibly in February and possibly in April?
Correct.
It would seem that it would be a lot more consistent if it was always the runoff in April. Our last terms, for those of you that weren't on counsel, I snuck in with one of them where the runoff was in late June, and I was sworn in the very week later. So yes, and Councilwoman Foreman had the same thing. Okay. Counselmember Studley?
That's what I was wanting clarification for. I'm completely in agreement with you on that. It would make more sense to have one time where, and I think April would be appropriate if that's when we're doing the runoff.
Counselwoman Foreman?
Well, I was going to ask for clarification, but if we vote this down, could we put language in that it would start '23 instead of '22? Could we put it off a year? Because I'll vote it down if we can do that, like Dr. Rogers was saying. I don't know.
It's already beginning in 2023, I believe, for the...
So if I ran and I lost, I would still continue my term till the end of June? Next year?
Yeah, it's intended to not impact current terms. Yeah.
Okay. Counselmember Holman?
I think I would, I'd be okay with that change to seating after the, first Tuesday after the runoff election. And that way, it would always be the same. Seating date would always be the same, so the terms would always be the same instead of one being two months longer, whatever.
Agreed.
So would we need to vote this down?
We need to vote it down and take it back to a study session to make that amendment, and then we can then put it forward to the voters.
Okay. I'd be okay with that.
And I just would like to say, I appreciate that it says after a runoff election and not like the first Tuesday of a specific month, which we have run into when the state legislature keeps changing our election dates.
Yes.
All right, seeing no other questions, the motion on the floor is to approve the recommendation. And I've clarified that if you do not approve it, it doesn't disappear. It goes to a study session where we can clarify it and bring it back. Counsel members, you may cast your votes.
Is everybody clear? Oh, I'm sorry.
All votes have been fails by a vote of 7, or 1 to 7, voting in favor, Councilmember Lynn. 1 to 8, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Now on to Item 6, review of Article 2, Section 22, to consider allowing the outgoing councilmember creating the vacancy to appoint his or her successor unless such vacancy has been created due to removal from office as a result of proceedings by a court or competent jurisdiction, or whether to delete language, allowing council to appoint a successor, and then still require a special election to be called for the purpose of filling such vacancy. The language recommended to clarify that council can either appoint someone to fill the vacancy or call a special election. Language also recommended to eliminate confusion about appointments being for the remainder of the term. CRC vote was unanimous. I need a motion to approve or reject the recommendation.
Still moved.
Thank you. Are there any questions from counsel regarding this item? I have a quick question. So it looks like it didn't change the actual process because currently, we would vote on the replacement or hold a special election. So the only thing it does change is it clarifies the end of the term, not until the next public election. Okay. Any other questions from counsel regarding this item? Seeing none, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers registered for this item?
Cynthia Rogers.
Me again? Sorry, I think I got a little lost. So on the item, it says about appointing a successor, but now it seems like that's not the case. It's just the same process, the paper I'm looking at. So if it says appointing, I would say too much shenanigans could happen there, and that's a no-go for me. But if this is, the process isn't changing, just clarifying, then I think that's good to have clarification. Thank you.
Daniel Munson?
I also agree with, if it's appointing, I think that there... So I don't think I'm really in favor of that. I think I would be more in favor of a electing two councilpeople per ward. I think that that's a much cleaner way to go. If, so watching the the council and the committees select new ward members when someone leaves or passes away, one thing that I've noticed in the conversation is they've had a big hang-up about not voting in elections. And so maybe some language needs to be put in there regardless of how it goes, is that you must have voted in one ward election. So I'd like to see that added. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any questions, final questions from counsel regarding this item? Counselmember Schuler?
So I just think, I want to make, I guess, a clarification about what's on our agenda because I think that's what's causing confusion about the language that's in each item and then what's recommended. So just for clarification, the language that is in all caps is what was... So just for clarification, the, the language that is in all caps is what was sent to the Charter Review Commission to look at and review, not what is proposed, what is being proposed tonight. So what's being proposed is the language that's underneath, which is the recommendation that they're making from the Charter
That's correct.
Review Commission, correct?
Yes.
Just for the, the public, right? Kind of to Cynthia's question. Brenda said yes, so.
Yes, yes, sorry.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, yeah, so that that was clarifying, because I think there was some confusion of the public as well on what, what language, and I think that will come up again down the list where those are not congruent.
So I guess my, my question would be more of a comment. I was hoping we would get some clarity. I think I went through a historic time of having to do these appointments and really liked the, the small kind of commission to select the successor that was then voted on by council. And I was really hoping for some charter language that would clarify that process and that make it uniform anytime this happened. Either the special election, depending on where we were, or that process. And so as if I'm reading this correctly, again, it doesn't change, so it would be the mayor to put names forward, correct? Okay, Councilwoman Foreman?
Never mind. It, it's just, yeah, I was hoping for more clarification on the appointment. So if we voted this down to go to a study session, Catherine, is it something that we could add to it, or would that need to be its own separate? Like, could it be a resolution or something? Yeah.
Sure, you could adopt it as a resolution, creating it as a policy of council without putting it in the charter. If there are future vacancies, you can always follow the process that we've done the last few times, setting the committee and those kind of things. It doesn't necessarily have to be codified. This just really allows you to either appoint in whatever process you will come up with or to call an election.
I would prefer charter language, because what did I appoint? Four people in my one year of council? It, it happens a lot on our council lately, and a lot of people had charter issues, like, oh, it's not clear, this and that. So I would prefer defined language in that. So I'm gonna shoot this down in hopes that we can add the language.
I would add it'd be nice to have some guidance on the appointment process or the commission or the special election process. And then how would, how do we decide? Would, would the mayor get to say, nope, sorry, guys, we're going straight to a special election unilaterally? So I suppose I would like clarification on that as well. Any other questions? Councilwoman Holman?
So the way I read it is that the council, the council, majority of council would vote. So the first time I ever saw an appointment was in 2012, before, right before I was on council, and it's how Robert Castleberry ended up on council. But the, I think there were four or five applicants in the council. The mayor and council at the time interviewed those, and then they made a decision. It ended up being a tie vote, and they ended up having to draw a name out of a hat, and it was Robert Castleberry's name, so council then decided, well, that wasn't a very good way to do this, so that's kind of when the, let's gather a committee of ward residents and have them make a recommendation. And that, that ended up resulting in a
Don't forget
in a tiebreaker thingy, so.
Sarita Wilson and James Chappell had the same thing.
Right, and so that didn't really fix the situation either, really, so neither way has worked real. I guess the council over the last several years hasn't been able to really decide on a way that works the way everyone would prefer. So, I mean, I like the idea of having citizens of the ward interview the applicants and then give a recommendation. And then, of course, we make the final decision, I guess, but, so do we need to change that, put that in there, that that's how we want to do it, or?
I, I wish that you all had had a little bit more opportunity to read our, the minutes of our discussion. Of course, a, a majority of the people that are in our commission actually observed on city council, so they're pretty familiar with the issues that you all are raising. And one of the things that we found ourselves coming back to, which speaks to, to your narrative, Councilmember Holman, is that regardless of what we put in the city charter in terms of a process, your conundrum is still that you don't want to or you can't invest a committee with the authority of the council. So regardless of how you appoint the committee, regardless of how many members it has in it, whoever is selected by that committee, the council has to make the decision ultimately anyway. So I, I think that we discussed that and may have decided that that's just not necessarily a a helpful function of, of the charter. You're welcome to disagree with us on that, and I think that I'm characterizing our conversation correctly. We just felt like we were possibly trying to make something work that is essentially not able to work. It's nice to have input from, from the ward members, but you just can't construct it in such a way that it, that it puts a functional requirement on you to vote in a particular way. You're ultimately, regardless of how the person is selected, you're ultimately gonna have to make the decision yourself. So process could be open to, if you leave it as a legislative instead of as a charter question, then, then that process is always open to yours or your successor's better judgment on what's a better way.
I appreciate those comments. For me, I think I'd still want in there, how do you choose the election or the appointment process? I think that would be helpful from my position, and if it is my decision to go either way. So, Councilwoman Holman, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, just that, I, I do agree with setting a time limit that council needs to make a decision with this time period or it goes to an election. But I, I do have some hesitancy, you know, based on similar comments from Chairman Thompson about locking in a particular process, that future mayors, future councils, and that we've seen that both, that both different time, or say, the two different ways committee and council doing it have both presented problems. And I would hate to see one of those get locked into the city charter and then it, you know, run into problems like that. So I'm, I'd be willing to have further discussion about this one for sure, if, you know, that's what we want to do.
Okay. Councilwoman Foreman?
I was just gonna say, one last final comment was, with as much blowback as we got from how we did all the appointments, I would prefer the residents vote how we do it. That's my preference.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yeah, what I'm trying to sort out is what, what is appropriate charter language and then what is appropriate legislative language or process language, because that's really where we've gotten stuck, I think, in all of the different appointments that we've had to go through this year. And I think the other thing that's worth mentioning is sometimes we prefer to take it to the election as quickly as possible, and we are prevented from doing that by the election cycle that is determined for us by the state election board. And, you know, there's several times where I believe we would have preferred to take it to the voters of the ward, but it was technically impossible to do that in a timely manner. So I think this language still, you know, allows us that flexibility to, based on circumstances, even if we want it to go to an election, we may not have a date available to us to do it. So that still leaves the ultimate decision sitting with the council. I think, as many of you know, I've been quite outspoken about the appointment process this year and, or really since we changed, tried to get a consistent process, I guess I'd say, starting in July of 2019. And I think we've made a lot of strides, but I would definitely like to have that spelled out or codified in some way, but where is the appropriate place for it? Because I think, you know, getting those details into charter language seems like that may not be the place for it. So, I mean, clearly, we haven't quite sorted this one all out, but I'm, I think we do need to, I think we do need to clarify in certain areas of where it belongs. But I think it's also important for everybody to understand that sometimes we have no choice about how fast we can get it to an election, because I think that would always be our preference.
And on that point, I, something that I would like to have additional conversation about is I know that Representative Bill was working very hard to allow, in the situation that we faced several times, a, a special circumstance to allow that, that election, and I don't know that on top of my head. So I would like that information additionally in deciding this item. Thank you for bringing that up. Any other questions from council regarding this item? Alright, seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve the recommendation. Council members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion fails, and with no one voting in favor.
Just a reminder, this doesn't mean that these are gone for good. They're just gonna have further discussion and more information from council. On to item seven, Article sixteen, Section two of the Charter to require the city council to consider a resident voted the electorate to increase city utility rates under certain conditions. The language recommended to require staff to prepare a rate study for each utility annually and requiring council to submit a rate increase for one or more utilities at the next council election, and making provisions for situations where an additional rate increase may be needed to meet an unexpected need. CRC vote was unanimous. I need a motion to approve or reject the recommendation. Still moved.
Second.
Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Foreman?
So is this saying that we, every year we have to present a rate increase and we have to vote every year? Or we can recommend it, or we have to?
We discussed the possibility, or tried to make room for the possibility that the same utility may need to be reviewed successively. But if I'm not mistaken, Catherine, you can check me on this, but I think that would, our intent was to require that, that the city council bring at least one utility forward for review to be presented to the public for an increase so that, so that we could break this cycle of pushing things off until the needed increase becomes so large that the likelihood of passage becomes a real point of anxiety. The, the drama that, that that has brought with this, especially for staff, makes them, makes it hard for staff to, to plan well, to predictably plan for the needs of that utility. And, and I, so our decision was not that we needed to rescind the public's right to vote on their utilities. We thought that was a non-starter. We thought that it wasn't likely that any politician was gonna find themselves campaigning on that mark. And, and, and we found that the utilities were functioning actually at a high level of performance and, and at a good rate. So we sought to really just address the problem of the continuity of the utility's revenues, and that by requiring the city council to bring the utilities forward, basically, we're substituting the charter for the political will or the lack thereof of the city council.
Well, I agree. I think utilities should be raised quite a bit. I just worry about voter fatigue to have to do this every year. That's a really big concern that I have.
That's, that's understandable, and I don't know that, I don't know that that's something that, we spoke about that a little bit, but I think in the long run, the functioning, the, the continuity for the function of the utility was more important, and of course, voter fatigue. If, if you bring this utility forward on an election, on a city council election, which is not the tendency of the council.
I know.
But if you bring it forward on the city council election, they're already fatigued by having to vote for you every year.
Yeah.
So, so it's just one more item on the, on the election.
That one costs them.
Pardon me?
I said that one costs them money, though, but, okay.
But it is, but it is part of the, you know, the legitimate governments of our, of our community, and so we are recommending that that just find its place as a regular item on our elections, so that when we're electing our officials, we also know that we're gonna be addressing other business of the city.
Thank you. Councilmember Lynn?
Councilwoman Foreman snagged my question. I'm good.
Thank you. Councilwoman Holman?
So just to further clarify that, every year we'd be required to have a public review of a utility. So like example, Fist Pass, next year you'd have sanitation, and then the next year you'd have water, and the next year you'd have wastewater, and the next year you'd go back to sanitation and just repeat all of our utilities in that order, reviewing them. And then if that year staff comes to us and says, we think this is the year council would have to act.
So we, we had that conversation, because of course, at first blush, that's what we seemed to be saying to ourselves. But we also recognized that things don't necessarily happen in a linear way, and so rotation may not really serve the needs of the, of the given utilities. And it may be that sanitation needs an increase sooner than a three-year cycle or a four-year cycle. And that would be, that would be brought forward at the discretion of the staff. That would be recommended maybe by the staff that for our review this year, we're recommending that you review sanitation in spite of the fact that we reviewed it two years ago. Sanitation finds itself with some unexpected needs. And we try to, we, we try to leave room for the possibility that two utilities may need an increase in the same year.
Okay.
We, we try to make it as flexible as possible, but still, still have the mandate that, that you would bring, bring something to the, to the citizenry, at least one of the utilities to the citizenry, to keep them in, in good cash flow shape.
So just to make sure that we're not saying we're gonna be required to send something to a vote, even if it doesn't need, need an increase?
No, I think that's right. I think, you know, the, obviously, the staff is gonna bring a review of their, of their utilities. They're gonna bring a review of the needs.
If they, they come and say, we don't think it needs an increase this year, we're not then required to still, hey, we're required in the charter to put this to a vote?
Certainly not, certainly not. But, but what we recommend, what we recognized from the presentation of the staff is that that doesn't tend to be the problem. The problem tends to be that at least one of the utilities is in need of regular increase.
Okay. Well, in my, my experience, we don't, the council, we don't review the utility rates every year. And staff, I know if, if there was a need, they would come to us for it, but it's not something we read regularly every year, have a meeting where we say, okay, what's the status of the utility rates? Do we need to raise them or not? We kind of just wait until
Till it's too late.
Until staff says, it's urgent now, we gotta do it. So I do, I do really like the idea of us having yearly reviews, the council, public meeting where we review the utility rates and the status of our utilities, but I just want to make sure we're not putting it to where we are required to have a vote every single year on a utility.
And again, I think that's where our, our commission benefited from having quite a number of members who had served on city council and were familiar with the process, and so I think that's why we came up with such a broadly flexible application that still still, that still had the proper amount of force to it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hall.
Um, are we still the only municipality in Oklahoma that requires a vote of the people on utility rate increases?
Yep.
Yes.
And a handful in the nation.
Yeah, we were, we, if I may, we discussed that, and we discuss it every time that this comes up. And for that reason, we looked at the staff presentation to see whether that particular anomaly was having a detrimental impact on our utilities. And I think that what we found was that our utilities are very well-run, competitive for excellence with everybody else in the state, and in terms of, in terms of their affordability, really competitive. So we came to, I, I don't want to speak too much for the rest of the commission, but what it appeared to me was that, that the current process is actually serving us quite well. It's providing us with excellence in service and a very affordable rate structure, and, but that's been over the course of 50 years now, so I felt like, I felt like that term indicated that we're functioning well, that in spite of the fact that we are anomalous, it's not actually detrimental to the, to the public that we are anomalous, and that if there was any sort of a problem, it was a problem of continuity, and so we tried to address the continuity as really, as the issue itself.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schuler.
As part of, sorry, as part of that discussion with stormwater, does our stormwater or lack thereof, the stormwater utility, part of that discussion, because I think that this comes up a lot with how we can't get there with stormwater, and that we're really struggling to figure out what that infrastructure looks like and how to pay for upgrading our stormwater.
I don't, I don't think we debated about stormwater itself, although if we chose to use the, a utility as our method for managing stormwater, then it would obviously be, have the benefit of being on that rotation or at least in that mix.
Seeing no other questions from council at this time, this is an opportunity for members... oh, okay, Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. So in regard to voting on utility rates, I think, in my personal opinion, regardless of how anybody feels about that process, I think it was created by citizen petition, and the only way it probably should ever be changed is if the citizens decide to get a petition together and vote on it again. But I do, again, really like the idea of mandating a regular review, and I, I was interested in maybe some clarification from Catherine about the city of Guthrie in regard to utilities. I know they voted on it a couple of years ago, if I recall, it even passed, but it didn't go in, or?
Yeah.
I don't know if there's some pending litigation over that issue, or?
I don't recall all of the details, but I don't think it's in effect there at this point. I think we're still the only city, they did consider it, I know, but I don't think it was ultimately successful. There was a lawsuit and some things along those lines, but...
Wasn't sure if there was anything legally regarding that situation that would have any impact on us, on our process.
No, my recollection is the lawsuit didn't have to do with, with the language itself, it was more to do with process, but I'm happy to look into that more.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Studley.
I just wanted to make a comment, that I, I think that, I understand the concern for voter fatigue, but I also understand we do ask our citizens to vote every year for a council member. And I think that, based off of some of the meetings that I've attended, I know that it's been quite a while since we've had an increase, and it seems like when we ask for an increase, as the chairman was saying, it seems to be not as of a digestible chunk as if we were to do this annually or, you know, biannually, I don't know how we could do it, but I think this offers a great start for us, and it pushes the vote back to the people and gives them opportunity to decide. So I know, I hear a lot from people who are on a fixed income, and five dollars may not seem like much to your eye, but to someone on a fixed income, that can make a difference on if they're going to eat or not. So I think that this is a really good idea, and it gives all of us the opportunity to review these utilities on an annual basis instead of waiting five, 10 years. And I know that the staff presents it to us, and they do a really great job, but I also know that sometimes they're fearful of asking for money from the people because they don't want it to get voted down, but I think this puts it back in the people's hands. So anyways, that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. A couple of comments from me before we get to public comment. So what happens if we do our review, which, if we were able to raise rates on our own, like almost every other city, we would do an annual review and wouldn't have to increase it if we didn't need to, but what if we have that annual election and it fails? And then we have it again and it fails, and so now we get back to these sticker shocks. And you all know how hard staff works for these elections to educate people, and so to ask our staff to do that, as, as strapped as they are every year, oh, that seems like a lot. I mean, look, we went through the public transit vote. If you all haven't seen a water rate increase, you're about to. It's a lot of work for staff. I just want to keep that in mind. And I know that they've done an amazing job every five years, but to see how stressed out they are, because if this fails, we are in a world of hurt and have to keep coming back. So I think it's not crazy to look at an option where if there is an increase below a certain percentage, and I get it, 50 years ago, that council did something real bad and has put every council since then in a world of hurt, and this, whatever we come up with will still go in front of the people to, to vote on, but I really think we should look at a different option that doesn't involve annual elections that require a ton of education, that, I mean, the reviews would happen either way at that point, and I'm, I'm confident that they would, they've been good stewards of, of tax dollars, and they'll continue to do so. So those are my thoughts on it right now, but I, I welcome public comment to, to see where you all are at. Do we have any registered speakers, Madam Clerk?
Cynthia Rogers.
Cynthia Rogers, Ward four, still, haven't moved yet. I really appreciate this discussion, and I appreciate the intent, because, you know, we'll have these, as you all know, very dramatic needs, and then we have really, you know, we're in crisis mode, and, and it's hard to have these elections, but I will tell you, voter fatigue is a thing. If you're forcing election every year, people get tired of you saying, oh, we need an increase, we need an increase, they just see increase every year, and if you look at the research on this, you will see that if you get a positive vote on a tax increase one year, that community the next year will have a lower chance. And even if you look at the city of Norman's votes, the longer between the rate increase asks, the more likely it is to be approved. So there is some tension between asking every year and then waiting until it's a crisis. And what we have done is when we ask for an increase, we ask for more than we need. You can just look at the operating revenues and the operating costs, so we build in and we accumulate and we save and we use that, and then we put that to our increases. So the way to think about this is, for a while, people are paying more than they need to for operating costs, and then for a while, they're paying less, and it evens out over the cycle. So asking every year doesn't mean you will get every year. Asking a little bit doesn't mean people will end up paying any less over that whole cycle. I think one of the biggest problems in Norman, in, in why things get put off, is because we put the wants before the needs. So we knew we needed a water rate increase before we asked for more money for Norman forward, and these other things. And politically, it's nice to give people what they want, and it's harder to ask for what they need. This doesn't fix that problem of putting forward these other things that people want that aren't as sexy stormwater utilities. So this won't fix that problem, but I do welcome annual review, but we also need to look in the bigger picture. We might say, hey, we need, you know, water rate increase, but you know what? We might need something else that we haven't reviewed even more, that could be more of a crisis. So I think we do need to look, and I will say, if you read the budget book, every year, you see the status of those funds. I'm sure Anthony and I aren't the only ones that look at it, and so you can see, and you can also see predictions of where those funds are going to be in the short run, and you see a narrative of what the needs are. So I think we do look at it, well, at least some of us nerdy wongs do, but...
Thank you. Any other comments, Madam Clerk? Any final questions from council regarding this item? I'll add one final thought, and it's something I, I give to any official that visits our community about the, the unique challenges of Norman, Oklahoma. We live in a state where we're the only state that ties cities to sales tax to support general funds the way that we do. We are home to the University of Oklahoma, Cleveland County, Griffin, Veteran Center, J.D. McCarty, all tax-exempt giant chunks of land that we don't make any revenue off of anyways, and we're the only city in the state of Oklahoma and a handful in the nation that has to vote on the creation or raising of public utilities. It's a lot. Councilmember Hall, are you trying to?
Yeah, I just have a question of clarification based on your comments, Mayor. So are you suggesting that we refer this for more clarification of language? And, go ahead.
I, I am. I am suggesting, Dr. Rogers is kind of on the same page as I am on this one, that just because you ask doesn't mean you're going to get it, and I think she's spot on, and apparently, there's data out there, that's not surprising, that if you ask each year, and Councilmember Forman touched on this, you're going to feel like, oh my gosh, they're always asking for something. So I, I don't know if that is the path to success in, in curing the problem that a council 50 years ago gave to us. So yes, I would like to consider this further.
So a no vote would just push it into the category of some of the other things that we've already discussed, to talk about maybe other options, even if we all agree that attending to it on a more, on an annual basis for sure, getting a review on an annual basis, but whether or not there might be another path on calling an election deserves further?
Or not having an election, you know, there's options where if it's under, I want to make sure Norman residents never feel the way they did 50 years ago, and so a thought could be if it's under a certain percentage, then it gets reviewed and recommended and voted on by council, but anything like the creation of a utility or a massive spike would obviously have to be voted on.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions from council, the motion on the floor is to approve the recommendation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion fails by a vote of eight to one, excuse me, by a vote of one to eight, voting in favor, Councilmember Tortorello.
Thank you. Item eight, Article six, section one of the Charter to increase the number of members of the Board of Norman Regional Hospital Authority from nine to 11 members. The language recommended to increase the number of board members from nine to 11, provided that at least nine of the members are Norman residents. CRC vote was unanimous. I need a motion to approve or reject the recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Council, Councilmember Hall.
I just have one question. I just need clarification about who is actually appointing the two members that would not be part of the Norman community?
It's still the same process we use now, so...
Okay.
Yeah, the name...
So we retain...
The mayor and council would...
We retain the authority to appoint every single person, whether they live here or not?
Yes.
Okay. My second item of clarification is, on boards and commissions, we have a stipulation that you need to be a resident to serve. I'm assuming that the way the Norman Hospital Authority is set up, that would not be applicable?
Right. This language says nine of the board members would have to be Norman residents, the other two would not have to be.
Okay, and that would be permissible under the authority?
Yes, I, I'd have to look at chapter four to see if, if it talks about the hospital authority in that same way. It may be that if the voters approve this, we would need to bring forward an ordinance cleaning that up.
Okay.
But this, as, as written, nine of them would have to be Norman residents.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to make sure that we retain the authority to appoint every member of the committee. Thank you.
And with that appointment, kind of continuing that question, it says that the other two would have to be where Norman Regional Hospital is located, correct? So I know we're in Moore, where else are we?
Doug Coverley, Ward seven. Right now, Norman Regional has facilities in Noble, Newcastle, Moore, South Oklahoma City, Midwest City, and I think I'm missing one or two.
Blanchard.
Blanchard, correct. And so it would have to be from one of those communities where we actually have facilities at this time.
Thank you, sir, which is exactly why we're the Norman Regional Hospital Authority and not Norman Municipal Hospital Authority anymore. All right, Councilmember Holman.
Yes, Mr. Coverley, would you mind, just, Doug is the chair of the hospital board, I think, still, and would you mind just maybe giving a brief, your thoughts on this proposal?
We've been discussing this for over three years now, and that's, it finally came then to council. As a regional hospital system, we serve not only Norman, majority comes from Norman in the central area, but also Moore and the outlying communities, and it's very important to us to, as we move from a hospital-based more to really community-centered and community-focused on what are those needs in the community, to really look at not only Norman, but also what's the need in Nor, in Moore? What's the need in Newcastle and these, these other outlying communities? And so we, we felt that it was important to have at least one or two members who could address some of those needs, especially in Moore, where we have the, the larger facility. And so we're coming before you, and this does not mean, though, that there will always be someone from outside there. It could be that all 11 are appointed from Norman, but you still keep control through the appointment system of the entire board, and board membership is still three-year terms, and so, but we just, we just wanted that voice and to have a meaningful voice, because sometimes advisory committees don't always feel that they're being heard, either at the board level or at, at the executive level, and so by having a board membership, we felt, and only having two, but so that Norman still has the control over the system, we felt, though, that this would actually give some voice then to, to other communities that we have facilities in and serve.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no other questions from council, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Madam Clerk, do we have any people registered to speak on it?
No, ma'am.
Seeing none, are there any final questions from council regarding this item? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve the recommendation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been passed by a vote of eight to one, voting against Councilmember Forman.
Thank you. On to item nine, Article 13, recall of elective officers to consider whether the language should be modified. The Charter Review Commission recommended changes to Article 13 to address potential timing conflicts with existing elections, ensuring the clerk has adequate time to review signed petitions, and incorporating state law where appropriate in light of enray petition to recall Ward three, City Commissioner Ezell, 2021 OK five. CRC vote was unanimous. I need... I need a motion to approve or reject the recommendation.
I should approve.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions from counsel regarding this item? The only question I had was about the gist. So I know there were a lot of falsehoods that were shared in the recall effort. Is there any way that it could be clarified that it has to be based in fact?
What we're adopting in this language, what's been incorporated, is a reference to the gist from the state statutory authority related to referendums. And that is just a short summary of why the person is being proposed to be recalled. And so, or I'm sorry, what the impact of the language or the petition would be. And so here, I think, somewhere in my language here, I have this, we're suggesting that we go ahead and put that in the charter so that the gist is, this petition would put before the voters the question of recalling this particular elected official, which means they would no longer be allowed to serve the remainder of their term if successful.
And so that was going to be it? I read that. You can't, that's the sample gist?
Yes, that is the gist, and that's consistent with Title 34.
As you can imagine, I'm trying to ensure that Norman residents don't get misled any more than they've already been misled. So, okay. Councilmember Holman?
Yes. Would you mind, Catherine, would you mind briefing us about that Ezell ruling and how it impacts the recall process, or how it did impact, or it does going forward?
Sure. So last fall, recalls were going on around the state, in Stillwater and Enid, here and elsewhere. And the Enid case just made it to the Supreme Court first. And so when the court looked at that, they had previously had a few cases where they had said, if your charter's silent, you need to follow this provision of state law specifically. In the Enid case, they said, you know, even if your charter's specific, if it's inconsistent with these statutes, you really need to be following these statutes rather than your own process. And so all of the language you see here, for the most part, is in response to that. The form of the petition changes. The gist is now required. We've added a publication requirement in response to that court holding. Let's see. And then I think primarily the other issues were addressing issues that we saw, having tested out our recall language in the charter for the first time. So the worst-case scenario for Brenda and I in this process, that we would end up with less than five council members seated. And our charter requires five votes to get anything done. So how would you appoint people to fill vacant positions? How would you call an election? That was sort of worst-case scenario. And so the Charter Commission wisely came up with some language to address that, the timing, things like that. I think we had a lot of challenges matching signatures to voter registration. Got a lot of people with the same names in this town. You know, signatures that are difficult to read, names difficult to read, things like that. And so the form and the state legislature had actually, effective November 1st this last year, updated the form for state initiative petitions and referendum petitions as well, because they were seeing the same thing we were seeing. It's hard to match up names to voter registration. And so there's more information on the form now. Our form's now consistent with state law and the form that they recommend, and I think that'll help with that process. But most of the changes related to the process are just to bring us into compliance with that new Supreme Court case.
State officials can't be recalled, is that right?
No, I don't think there's a right to recalls. But what the court was saying is, in cities, you can't recall officials unless it's provided for by the charter. So for years, cities have followed their charters, because it was a matter of local concern, not a right given to all cities. But the state court, Supreme Court basically said, you need to follow the same processes initiative or referendum petitions when you do a recall.
Okay. Thank you, Catherine.
Councilmember Tortorello?
I think she just answered my question. So we are going to go to the referendum format going forward, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So it would make it easier for the city to go ahead and verify the signatures and the petitions?
Yeah.
If the time period for verification, for example, with multiple wards, are 90 days, have we considered extending, you know, if a recall petition happens again, and they have more than one ward, say, three, would they also get the extra 90 days to do the recall? Or is this just for the inspection of the signatures?
Oh, to circulate the petition?
Yes.
No, that was not considered by the commission.
Should that have been?
The extension that we gave was really for the benefit of the clerical work that was going to be required to be done for multiple signatures.
Okay.
So we really didn't, we didn't consider any problems that might come on the part of the citizens circulating the petitions. We were really trying to focus on the process that we were imposing on the city staff with more than one petition. We had talked about possibly limiting the number of petitions that could be circulated at one time, so that we wouldn't be in a position to have more than a quorum that would be called, with, or recalled, or that we wouldn't be overburdening the staff. And I think that the, I think that it was the judgment of the commission that we didn't want to limit the citizenry on the number of petitions that they could circulate, or the number of recalls they could make. But we did want to make provisions for the extra burden to the staff.
Okay. All right. I do have one more question about the bookend, the six months prior to taking, or six months to take an office to be eligible for recall, and the bookend, the six months prior to leaving office. So is that still going to remain the same? That verbiage is not going to change? That standard, is it going to change?
The six months, my understanding is that right now, six months, once you've been seated, you have six months where you can't be recalled. We are recommending that the other bookend of, within six months of the end of the term, also a person can't be recalled.
Okay.
That would be, that would be a change. Whereas right now, you could recall somebody right up to the end. And our concern was, first of all, if somebody's just been elected and you want to, say, basically invalidate their election, you just initiate a recall. And we didn't want to unwind into something like that. We also don't want the recall toward the end of somebody's term to be available as, again, to weaponize the process and basically bring somebody down as a political tactic, as a tactic on the part of an opponent that might want to walk into the seat more easily. So we kind of tightened it up a little bit.
Great. Thank you, Chairman.
Kind of based on one of Councilmember Tortorello's comments and something you had said, you opted to, should more than four councilmembers be recalled in the same recall election, that an affirmative vote of a majority of the remaining seat would be able to conduct city business? But if we're looking at worst-case scenario, what if the entire council was recalled? Or what if eight were recalled and it was one person? So I think I would be more in favor of limiting the amount that could go through, just because of the unforeseen, you know, or seven are recalled and you're 1-1, and then there is no majority. So that is certainly a concern of mine, just based on what we saw as potential and then seeing how far it could go. Heaven forbid it ever go that far. But these are, if we're going to clean it up, I feel like we might as well clean it up. So that's just a concern of mine. Councilmember Studley?
I was just saying, as far as putting clarifying language in there, because I don't think that it would be right. And I could see that being a topic of debate of, well, we got 90 extra days since the city staff gets 90 extra days to review the signatures. I also am curious, are we allowed to put something in there? Because what Mayor Clark said about the truth, like, when someone recalls, do they have to say why they're recalling? Is that something that they have to file with the city?
Even under our current process, you give a reason stated at the top of the signature page, but that reason is determined by the person circulating the petition. I mean, it's typically that something to the effect of they are no longer filling the duties of their position, or something like that.
Which is very subjective.
It's usually pretty broad.
Because I know some of the recalls I saw were very specific with items of why, and they were clearly false items. So I'm curious, is that something that they're just adding on the petition whenever they're handing out for signatures? Or is that something that they're filing with you, and you're printing that off on documents for them? How does that work?
The petition that's filed in my office is the one that gets circulated for signatures, and it would have my filed stamp on it to show that it's the actual petition. If additional information is being circulated along with that petition, I'm certainly, I mean, it's not something that's prohibited under the charter, but it's not something that I'm aware of either. If you're referring to just additional things that might have gone out via social media or something like that, there's really not any, there's nothing in the process that speaks to that.
Can we put something in here? I don't know. Catherine, question?
Yeah, I mean, I think what the language says now is currently in the charter is, at the top of each page of the petition, there will be a short statement of the reasons for which recall is being sought. In bringing this in line more with the referendum process, we have changed that to a simple statement of the gist of the recall position, proposition. And in the referendum process, the goal is more about what the impact of signing the petition would be, and less about why you are proposing that this action be taken. And so the gist would be just, this will allow the voters to decide whether to recall the officer prior to the expiration of their term. And so that's why, that's why it was changed that way, to bring it more in line with Title 34. Whether or not, you know, we could add additional requirements, we probably could, in terms of a statement for the reasons why recall is being sought. I don't think that addresses the misinformation issue, because you're going to have people taking petitions and saying whatever they think is persuasive to get people to sign it.
That's true.
So I don't know that it necessarily addresses misinformation.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Forman?
Yay. To Councilmember Studley's point, sorry. I agree that we should, I would like to pump the brakes on this one and put some clarifying language, because even though they might take the petition and say whatever they want, they're signing a legal document. And so I don't want, you know, I could create a petition then that says, I'm recalling Mayor Clark because she hates puppies. And then people would be signing, oh, yeah, she hates puppies. And that's a little ridiculous. And so I, I'm going to vote against this in hopes that we can maybe put some clarifying language on what has to be stated, a little tighter, or else you're recalling because you don't like puppies.
Councilmember Tortorello?
You know, I agree with this, but I think we're going down a slippery slope, and we're trying to have a ministry of truth and violate the First Amendment to what they want to, you know, have the petition for, or the referendum. I don't think that going forward, they would, you know, try to recall you for not liking puppies. We all like puppies, but I know where you're going with this, too, as well. I just think that if we take this further, we need to be sure that we don't shoot anyone down based on why they want to do it, if it has merit. And the problem with merit is that it's all determined on our point of view. And I think that we should be very careful walking down this slope, because it could affect you on the other end, too, as well. So, you know, if we vote up, vote down on this, you know, I would just caution us to make sure that we don't put any language that would stop a petition from going forward if they fear it does not agree with your point of view or your persuasion. So that's all I have to say.
Councilmember Hall?
Again, this is just a point of clarification. According to your explanation and Ms. Walker's explanation of the language that was added here, it's to be in line with state statute language. So would that, would we be compromising what you're trying to achieve here by trying to add additional language that's not present at the state level?
I don't think necessarily so, as long as we keep the gist of the recall proposition in there, and as long as the language isn't being used to circumvent the recall process. So as Councilmember Tortorello mentioned, you know, you wouldn't want to have that language in there, have something in the charter that would allow some decision or determination that the reasons you're seeking recall aren't valid, and therefore you can't circulate your petition.
Okay. So my follow-up to that is, would, would it leave us open in any way to possible preemption?
I don't think so. I mean, it's always possible in this state. But I don't think it opens us up to any kind of substantive vulnerability, as long as we're keeping the gist in there. I think that's the important part, as we're meeting the minimum requirements set by state statute.
Thank you. Does the state statute allow the Sundays and holidays? Because I feel like that's antiquated and needs to be counted in the 30 days.
No, it doesn't exclude those days in the shot clock time.
So ours would automatically match that? It would not exclude?
Their timeline's completely different, because these are statewide petitions that they're really addressing in Title 34. So their timeline is different from ours. The court has never ruled on that piece of it. I don't think that that could, I don't, I don't think that would be challengeable, like, could be challenged, I don't think it would be successful. Just because local elections, local offices are clearly matters of local concern. We're not talking about, you know, over a million people and population to circulate petitions around here. So I think the timeline's really a function of how many signatures would be required.
So we could take out the Sundays and holidays, knowing full well from actual experience that that didn't stop anyone from collecting signatures?
Yeah, I think that could be taken out. That's not, I gave you a really long answer to your simple question.
Thank you. Any other questions from counsel regarding this item? Okay, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Forman?
So if people signed something that noted that Bria Clark hates puppies, so that's slander, could she sue the people who signed to something like that? Like, would they be liable?
Elected official, the standard for slander is different, but truth is always a defense. So I always tell people, if someone's approaching you with a petition of any kind, don't just trust what they say, read what's on the petition, do your research. You know, it's on you to be an informed signer of a petition.
And I'm sorry, Mayor, you might have to take a picture with puppies now. I'm sorry, I apologize. I don't hate puppies.
With that said, Madam Clerk, does anyone register for public comment?
No, ma'am.
Seeing none, are there any final questions from counsel regarding this item? Okay. The recommendation in front of you is to, or, sorry, the motion on the floor is to approve the recommendation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast by a vote of four to five, voting in favor, Councilmember Holman, Councilmember Tortorello, Councilmember Schudler, and Councilmember Peacock. I would, are you asking for this to come back to study session?
Yes.
More, okay. Because we really got to give you more time, I'm just saying.
It's the last one, right?
It's the last one, right? Nope, sorry, skipped one. Item ten, Article two, Section two of the Charter, to require a candidate for city council to reside in the ward in which he or she seeks selection for a minimum of six months prior to filing for said office. Language recommended to require residency within the ward for six months prior to filing for elective office with provisions made for cases where ward boundaries have changed. The CRC vote was unanimous. I need a motion to approve or reject the recommendation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council regarding this item? My one question was regarding if the ward boundaries change. So let's say Ward six and Ward one change, and now Foreman is in Ward one, would she run for Ward one and not have to have the six-month requirement? Or would she run for Ward six even though she technically doesn't live there anymore? So she wouldn't have the six-month going for Ward one?
Right.
Interesting, okay. Any other questions from council? Seeing none, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comment regarding this item. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone registered to speak on this item?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Are there any final comments from council regarding this recommendation? Councilwoman Holman?
Just that, one of the main reasons we had to talk about this is that it came up a couple of years ago. We had a candidate that ran against me, actually, had only lived in the ward for a couple of months, was a student that lived in Walker Tower, wasn't from Norman. So I had to formally challenge their candidacy, and the committee, the Election Commission, actually ruled to allow them to run because the language had said six months prior to the next general election, and the next general election was actually three years away. So it was based off the next mayoral election is the way they determined it. So we kind of needed to make some changes and make some further clarification to avoid that situation. There were actually two challenges to candidates that year in Ward one and Ward seven over candidates that had not lived in the ward at least six months. So that's it, thanks.
Councilwoman Tortorello, did you have a question? Nope?
You stepped out for a second.
Did you have a question, sir?
No, I just needed.
All right, thank you. The motion on the floor is to approve the recommendation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes. Just ca-cah next time. Okay, Councilwoman Schuler?
Sorry, I just realized, I had some, I guess, just some clarification on, this says filing, but does this also pertain to filling vacancies? So does the person that we potentially appoint to fill a vacancy, if we are not, they are not filing to run in an election, also need to reside in the ward for six months?
It would seem like we could put that in whatever document that we end up doing. But that's a great question, something certainly to think about if and when we draft further guidelines on it. Okay, any other looking around? No, okay. The motion on the floor is to approve the recommendation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion passes by a vote of eight to one, voting against Councilmember Lynn.
Thank you. Now on to our final item. Item eleven, resolution as for review to consider adding language to the Charter to require a vote of the electorate for approval of a tax district over five million dollars. The motion voted on was to recommend the electric vote on all sales tax increment finance districts over five million dollars, correct? Just ever? Ah, and this was the CRC vote that was split five-five. Need a motion to approve or reject the recommendation?
So moved.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Lynn?
So just to be, for any TIF that that goes to sales tax, it would have to go to the voters. But then all the other ad valorem taxes, they could just vote on council? And they, that could be as often as they so chose or we chose?
Yes, sir, that's the case now, and it would remain the case.
Okay, just making sure. Thank you.
Along those same lines, the ad valorem or property tax TIF has a different mechanism because of the entities involved that receive property tax, is that how I understand, or?
Any TIF, you have to have a statutory TIF committee that includes representatives of those taxing entities on your statutory TIF committee review.
Okay.
Or review committee.
Wanted to clarify, since we are the, since we use sales tax only, and then you take the property tax entities, MPS and Moore Norman and County and Health Department and so on, we could still do a ad valorem property tax, property tax TIF, even if they object to it?
Yes, yeah. There's been some legislation to change that, but it has not been successful so far.
Okay. But the way it is, stands here, since the city's budget, the rationale is since the city's budget is based on sales tax revenue, that's the one that most directly impacts us, so sending it to a vote of the people is the idea there. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from council regarding this item? Councilwoman Studley?
Only for stuff over five million, or does it, is it any amount that is involved in sales tax?
Any amount that involves sales tax.
Any amount, okay. That's just, I just, okay.
No, I need a clarification on that as well. Councilwoman Tortorello?
She stole my question too, so. So as, if, if a project goes forward and and it meets a requirement where it has to be voted, so how would we determine when to have that election or votes? Like the sales tax portion, so we would put that to a vote, how long would it take? What would that process look like?
That is a good question. I know it involves project plans and all sorts of fun stuff. Can you give a brief rundown of what that process looks like and an estimate of when we would have to have an election?
Sure. Depending on the size of a TIF, proposed TIF district, it can take a few months, it can take over a year, but it is a lengthy process. You have a project plan that sort of sets out what the, what the goal is, but it has to go to the statutory review committee to be looked at as well, and to especially look at the economic impact of the project. So sometimes that can take some time. So I don't think it would be sent to the voters until after that process has concluded. Usually that's when it would come to council for approval. So at that time instead, it would be going to the voters for approval, and then it would become effective upon a successful election.
So it can take months then basically for for big projects?
Yeah, if it's a really big project, it could take quite a long time.
So have we ever, so the the process for the TIFs, has it been to the voters before? So TIFs are nearly defined for a specific project and a time and duration. So have we ever sent this to the voters before? This is brand new then?
Correct.
So what what's with the change? Why the change, I guess?
I would argue the UNP TIF was one of the most divisive issues in our community pre-COVID, and I think more residents would like a say in it. It's worth pointing out that for those that are watching, we've had three TIFs so far. One was the Campus Corner TIF, which many people don't know about because it was small. It was 1.25 million and rather successful. And then the UNP TIF, which is over fifty million dollars, which was quite contentious. And now we have the Center City TIF, which is based on property tax, which does not impact our sales tax revenue. So again, I don't think it's on many people's radar or gathering much revenue at this time.
I'm just thinking, playing devil's advocate here, that we've got a project that's fifteen million dollars, and we go through the process of having the voters look at and and vote on it, on the sales tax portion here. What happens if we drive that development away? What happens if that opportunity evaporates because they just can't wait any longer to get the project started? So what mechanisms do we have in place that would prevent that or at least have the development or the project say, hey, you know, we'd like to move this forward? So how does that process look?
I think I'll throw in there, we've seen in the past with elections where Norman voters need a lot of information, and so if it takes a year to come up with the information and then still get voted down, that could be concerning. But if they wanted to see if it would pass at the beginning, but then didn't have the information, it may also fail. Just my opinion based on experience.
Thank you.
Councilman Peacock?
Yeah, thank you. If we were to move forward with this and the voters approved a sales tax TIF, would would that TIF still be subject to a referendum petition?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Hall?
So just a couple points of clarification, and this was included in our document, but just wanted to get some of these things on the record for anybody who's listening at home. So are there any other municipalities in Norman, I mean, in Oklahoma that take TIFs to the vote of the people?
No, I don't believe there are.
Okay. So some of the concerns I have really revolve around what you so adequately explained about why you had a split vote of five-five. And, you know, this is a group of people that you've described as being very diverse in points of view and experience and, you know, what they brought to the table and serving on the commission. I know some people have served on previous commissions. And so I, I was confused myself about the language, and now I've got a better understanding after your explanation that you did change the language to eliminate the five-million-dollar cap, which I think is a positive move in the right direction. But I guess my concern at this point is that you had such a robust discussion within the group, and even with that, you could not arrive at a consensus about how we should move forward with this. And I understand perfectly why we were interested in having this discussed as a charter amendment in the first place because of the contentiousness of the UNP TIF. And I think, you know, there's a fair, fair amount that we could discuss there that we're still, we're still suffering from adverse consequences of how that particular TIF has been executed over time. And as you pointed out, Mayor Clark, we've got two other TIFs that people really don't, aren't even aware that are out there, and one has been already closed out with improvements that have benefited our community. And hopefully with Center City as an ad valorem TIF, we will be able to reap the benefit for public infrastructure. So I, I really understand that conflict of which way to go forward with this. And so for me, I am concerned on the fiduciary side of the ability of the council to be able to have the flexibility of bringing a project forward and creating TIFs and that sort of thing. I like the split that you made between ad valorem and sales tax. But because of the discussion we had about a decision that the council made years ago about utility rate increases going to the vote of the people, I do have some pause about, you know, is this the right thing to do to take it to a vote of the people? TIFs are extremely complex. I don't pretend to know all the ins and outs of TIFs, and I worry that we're, in a way, not assuming the responsibility that we have as elected officials in representative democracy to do, you know, consider TIFs and and the impact that they have on people. We talked about the timeline and the potential, again, what if they fail? And, you know, we have really paid a price for having to take the water util, or the utility rate increases to a vote of the people, and I understand why that occurred too. But I, I really am hesitant at this point about, once we do that, we won't ever be able to take it back. So those are my concerns.
Thank you. Councilwoman Holman?
Thank you. I do share those same concerns as Councilwoman Hall. I, I do understand the, kind of the motivation behind this is definitely the UNP TIF, I think specifically the arena issue, when a lot of folks felt like we were going to potentially approve a TIF that, you know, upwards, you know, of a hundred million dollars. Maybe we were only going to build a parking garage, but there was the belief in the community that this council was going to approve a hundred million dollars in TIF funds to build an arena for OU. And that, you know, made, there was lots of confusion about it, a lot of people were upset about it, and felt that that type of decision probably should be made by the people, that large of a decision. And I could, I could see, definitely see that, that viewpoint and why that would motivate folks, and that's really, in my opinion, why this, where this came from was that specific issue. But I do share some of those same concerns, and I would like to probably further discuss this particular measure because one of my concerns has been like the Campus Corner TIF, you know, it came in, it redid the sidewalks, new lights, ADA ramps, put in the new parking meters, those things that have made Campus Corner aesthetically a nicer place, it's more accessible to folks with mobility challenges. It's been good for many of the businesses there. But I do wonder, would people in other parts of the city have voted for that? Maybe they don't ever go to Campus Corner, maybe they don't care about it. And TIFs are supposed to be, I think part of it too is the UNP, okay, in my opinion of TIFs, they're supposed to be, the intent is to revitalize existing areas of a city, not necessarily to encourage new development out of an empty, and in my opinion, a high-profile piece of property along the interstate. It is meant for areas like Campus Corner or Main Street, Flood Avenue just up the ways here. And, but I have wondered, would citizens around the rest of the city vote to just fix up a very small section, you know, a few blocks of this neighborhood or not? Maybe they would. And so I do want to continue having this discussion about this item because I think there is merit in it, but I, I think that we need to discuss the ramifications of it further.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions from council at time, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comment regarding this item. Madam Clerk, do we have any people registered to speak on this item?
Again, still here, still Ward four, still Cynthia Rogers. So I have a lot to say about TIFs, and I will say professionally, this is where I can put on my professor hat and say, I study TIFs. But instead, I'm going to put on my citizen hat, and I'm a taxpayer, and taxpayers vote on sales tax rate increases in this city. And when they vote on it, they don't know that it's going to be used for this project or that project or whatever. And so then taking something that people vote on as a general sales tax and diverting some of it for a particular project without their specific input is really an end around letting citizens have a say in how their tax dollars are spent. Now, if the city wants to borrow money for particular projects, what do we have to do? We have to have a vote for geo-bonds and borrowing. So what a TIF does is it effectively lets a council, five members of council, commit future funds and borrowing that's going to be paid back by voter-approved sales taxes into the future. It's potentially a very big commitment. My experience is that the research that you need to evaluate these is insufficient. You get consulting reports done by the project supporters, you rarely get actual economic analysis of economic impacts, you get projections of revenues. It's piss poor, that's all I'll say. But mostly, this takes tax dollars that people approve, and it takes them, it potentially leads to borrowing based on that, future commitments. And we've seen how that has crippled our general fund because we rely on sales taxes. And so when you allow projects to go through that commit future sales taxes without a vote that we would have for other sorts of bonding, sorts of issues, it's just an end around, it's a loophole. We absolutely should let people have a say in how their tax dollars are spent if we're committing to some vision for the city, if it's a big thing. to some vision for the city, if it's a big thing. I was actually okay with the $5 million or some, you know, so we have some discretionary sorts of opportunities. But sales taxes are voted on, and we approve them. And if we're going to commit future sales taxes, people should have a say. I have 20 seconds left. I'll just yield back to you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, any final questions from council? Councilmember Lynn?
I just wanted to say thank you to everybody that sat on this committee and put in these hours of work and, and taking the time, I mean, compiled all this. It's a ton of information. And you can see that you really put some effort into it, and I just want to say I appreciate you.
Good, thank you. Any other? Councilmember Studley?
I want to also thank you guys. I really appreciate your work. I know that that is a lot of work and many hours that you put in. I am curious on this one, though. I agree with Dr. Rogers on this, that the people should have a vote in it. However, I think that there should be a little bit of a discretionary fund that we're allowed to say, okay, if it's under a certain amount and things need to get done, like the Campus Corner project, what if the citizens said, I don't want to do that because I live on 36th and Tecumseh, or I live on 48th and Rock Creek. I don't want to mess with that. So there are certain things that we know that need to get done in the city. And so my concern is if we put it all in the people's hands, maybe certain things that really need to get done, won't get done. So I feel like I'm also in agreement with Councilmember Holman here, that we need to have a little bit further of discussion on this, about what that cap would be, instead of just saying they vote for everything.
Thank you. Councilmember Schuler?
Yeah, I would like to echo some of previous comments about, about this. I agree with Dr. Rogers, kind of thinking about increasing, you know, sales tax and diverting funds and giving people a say in what this looks like, and utilizing TIF monies for, you know, project development. But I'm, I'm also, like other council members have said, concerned about getting certain things passed by the vote of the people, and, and concerns about utility rate, you know, increases and how difficult that has been when we take that to the vote of the people. So I think this, because of those concerns, this needs to have some more discussion from us. So we need to figure out exactly what this mechanism looks like. And so that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Councilmember Foreman?
I was just going to make the comment. I'm voting for this. I know that the rest of my council will probably vote against it for further discussion. But specifying, oh, the TIFs here, there, oh, I don't want to pay for that. The UNP TIF has been blighting my ward for years now, and other wards. And so I'm not too concerned about that. I think that the people need to vote on everything that we could possibly put in their hands. So out of principle, I'm voting for this, even though I know it's going to go down.
Thank you. Any other final questions, comments? I'll just say thank you for the discussion. We know this is a very sensitive issue. Thank you for even attempting to address it. And Councilmember Hall, you said so many wonderful things, as did many of my colleagues. I called out a council from 50 years ago, and I want to think long and hard before I joined those ranks. So I too will be supporting further discussion about some sort of limit. All right, the motion on the floor is to approve the recommendation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion fails by a vote of one to eight, voting in favor, Councilmember Foreman.
All right. Again, I want to, I'm sure I speak for my colleagues. Thank you, Chairman Thompson, for all of the members that served on this commission for literally years, trying to get it wrapped up. And to all the staff members who provided all of the information and research to help facilitate this process. Nothing, I think, was voted out completely. We just want to continue the discussion and continue fleshing it out. And you have provided amazing groundwork for that, and I deeply appreciate it. Thank you so much. This meeting is adjourned.